I can drop that off for you if you want after this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Well, if you wanted to deliver it to a person, I think that's...
Okay, first let me add item number 54. This is combination D, special event permit for the bar code.
Which one is that? Is that 60th Street in Beloit?
Oh, that's in...
Yeah. It used to be Ron's Pub.
Yeah, 60th and Rayo Tract.
Rayo Tract, yeah. Yeah, not Beloit, yeah. Mobile.
What number are you on, 54?
First one.
Number 54, yeah. This is a...
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Second.
Okay. Whoever. Who'd you write down?
Me. Just a split second.
I just figured we should have the same. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, 54A. Another special event. Lamaskis Pub, 89th and Greenfield. Time we got here till 11:00?
Eight.
Seven AM until 8 PM, okay. Anybody got any?
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 54B. It's a music application.
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And we finally make it to 55.
I move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
This would have to go as amended because there was a correction of a name.
As amended.
Okay. Okay. Someone's seconding?
Alderman's second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Then we have a communication from Mark Lutz, changing the name.
Approve and place on file.
Station six, right next to station two?
Yeah. How did he get to six?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Is there a secret station five somewhere? I don't know about that.
Any relevant discussion?
56.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We voted for it, I think.
Item number 57, application.
No, I gotta pull out my cheat sheet.
I'm sure I left copies if anyone wants. The pack, if anyone wants copies.
These are copies of...
Of those applications, yes.
Share with you.
Basically, I'm asking if do we want to... I would say we call this person in.
Yep, Mr. Hamilton? Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold up. Okay, then we have... Are all of these?
Yeah, those three.
Yeah, they're all right here. Adriana Hernandez. Okay. Mr. Chair, on Adriana Hernandez, I'm going to suggest no, we don't need to call her in. She has only two operating while suspended. That's certainly not any type of habituality. And she has a current valid license. So I'm gonna move approval on her. Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Then we have item number 59. Mr. Rodriguez.
Maricela Rodriguez, that's a woman, I think. Retail theft. Yeah.
I'm gonna move approval. Mr. Chair. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I believe that's all we have.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna quick say, based on our meeting we had earlier, that is essentially what you'd be doing.
Okay.
That's what that means. All right. All right. We have to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the Administration and Finance Committee will come to order. And our first item on our agenda is a joint referral with Public Works. It's item number 10, which is a resolution authorizing a director of public works assigned proposal professional service agreement related to Milwaukee Water Works wholesale customers, et cetera.
Move approval.
Motion from Alderman Weigle and a second from Alderman Roat. And is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I read this. I don't still don't fully understand exactly what we're getting out of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're intervening in Milwaukee's case because Milwaukee is giving them benefits that the city of West Dallas and other metros do not get. So we're trying to make sure that they pay their own fair shares rather than just be in a per gallon-ish thing at the end of the day. Mike Roth from our water utility's been super involved in this and he's been tracking it. It's a whole metro group that's doing intervention. So it's basically to get fair pricing.
Gotcha. Make sure we're not paying more than...
Not paying, make sure we're not paying even more.
They need to pay for any of the stations that they're delivering on, which doesn't seem right.
Anyway, we can get in on some of those stations?
That's what we're also working on.
Do you know anyone in Milwaukee?
Just...
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And then item 11 is a communication from Director of Public Works regarding a chiller at the police department.
Move place on file.
And we have a motion from Alderman May.
Second.
Second from Alderman Weigle. Any discussion?
Please, Alderman Roat.
They're still not done with it, right? Isn't there like halfway?
Correct.
Like this is Chip of the Iceberg type thing where...
This is...
Iceberg.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a warning. We were trying to fill... Repair the first part when the other ones went down. And so now, I think, I don't know if we're at the point where we're renting one yet or not. It's not. But that's probably a possibility in the transition. This one goes down and then we will need to...
So the solution, they put a whole new one on?
Yes.
Which is?
Or else it will be very hot in the police department.
I'm not worried about the jails. Firefighters handle it well. I'm kidding.
Mr. Chair? Alderman Weigle. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Roat.
About, I don't have the...
This is, I don't believe that we have a final amount. This is just letting you know that something is coming. Letting you, it could, I'm trying to remember.
There was 225, it was 225...
I'm sorry, what?
225,000 was listed in the memo. About 180 would be the new unit and about 40,000, 45,000 for the rental if it has to happen.
Okay.
Alderman Weigle. That's gonna be my question. I understand that if we're under a time constraint and it's like an emergency repair, but if we go to a rental, does that give us time to put it out to bid? Is this gonna, this looks like it's gonna, it's being sole sourced to this butter spitting, right?
Well, it's not being sole sourced. That's what Dave's doing right now is getting pricing.
Okay.
So it gives him, while they're working on it, it's giving him theory. We were just talking about the...
The chiller.
I just said you were in the process of getting pricing and the 180 and the 40.
Yeah, we're trying to verify the amount and the reason why the chillers need repair or replacement, I should say. So we do have an average approximate cost of 225s.
So Dave, so you're trying to get an amount? Are you talking to different vendors or you're...
Different contractors.
Different contractors? Yes. I just wanted to make sure that we're not just, okay, sure, whatever, here's a check.
The rental would likely come from butter spitting though, right? Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to place on file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 12, resolution extending the agreement for professional services with the Horton Group.
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Alderman Chapeleski, yes.
I know, I have experience with him and I was definitely impressed with him. The pricing is the same or...
It's going up slightly. I believe it's about 12,000 a year. They are providing us more services than initially they did. They're doing a lot more with our retirees and with our benefits. So, but we were able to keep it, minimize the increases by and extend it for three years. Initially, we started with a two-year, asked to have a three-year, but then also wanted out that if the people that are currently working with us are no longer there, that we have an ability to find other assistance at that time.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 13 is a resolution relative to approving a contract with Aurora Health Care for our health risk assessments.
Move approval.
And we have a motion from Alderman Weigle, second from Alderman Chapeleski. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 14, resolution authorizing $25,000 from Community and Economic Development Investment Fund to create space at the Aurora West Alice Medical Center.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Roat.
We've done this every year, right? It's the same thing where once we did something, it's in the emergency room and...
It's been 25.
It's been 25 for a while.
Yeah, since I've been here, it's been 25. I don't know what it was previous to that.
But the same concept.
Yes.
That's what I meant.
And Alderman May, yes.
Yeah, I think it's been, when this first came to us, eventually, I think they wanted it for some program and we said we wanted to go to infrastructure. So it has to go to capital through the building since we own the building. And I believe reading this, that's where it'll be going in the case. I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 15, resolution authorizing director of development, enter a professional service agreement with Cloud Burst Group.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
This is IDIS training. It's the format of...
Yeah, tell me what IDIS is or...
IDIS is just a federal acronym for their federal reporting system.
Okay.
And I can't even actually remember the breakdown of those.
And that's the federal reporting of our housing assistance that we...
Community Development Block Grant Funds. It's also the financing, finance management system for those funds. We've had some retirement and turnover and we think it would be great to bring the HUD certified trainer into our offices here to provide some direct training to our current staff that we have working in Community Development Block Grant Funds. I think it's helpful with us in the financial management as well as beneficiary reporting on the huge...
Mr. Chair.
Small $5,000 cost.
Thank you.
And charge to Community Development Block Grant Funds.
From what I understand...
Ms. Grill, yes.
It's more cost effective to have the person come here than to have a staff go to DC.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Motion from Alderman Chapeleski, second from Alderman May. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 16 is resolution approving the rescission and refund of property taxes.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanna note that I think this is kind of interesting. We taxed ourselves?
By mistake.
By mistake?
By fire.
We taxed fire, if I recall from reading the...
Right, right. This one was the fire one.
Yeah. Taxed fire. Not fire department, first rate industrial.
Yeah, yeah. That's station six.
That was station four and five.
Four and five. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 17 is resolution approving terms and conditions of an economic...
Move approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Patrick.
I'd like to recommend that we make one amendment to the loan terms. It's not to the resolutions, it's just to the loan terms. It'd be 90 days of interest only payments and then regular PNI payments following that. Amortized over the same time period, 10 years. Matching something I did not get until Friday afternoon, which was the loan terms from the Wisconsin Lung Chamber of Commerce, which is also a partner in the loan. Not with our funds, but part of the project. So I'm just matching those terms.
And on that issue, just because I was curious to, from further clarification, Wisconsin Lung Chamber of Commerce is involved. The folks aren't mung. You don't have to be mung to receive funds from the Lung Chamber of Commerce, which was new to me.
They're diversifying, right?
They're diversifying their portfolio.
Okay. Alderman Chapeleski, you wish to make a motion to approve as amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Second, as amended.
Okay. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And item 19, communication from the city administrator transmitting traffic violation and accident reports.
18.
You skipped one. 18.
The staples stuck together.
No respect. He gets no respect.
Thank you.
When everything's running fine, you don't even know who he is.
Item 18, communication from IT Director regarding moving to Windstream, from Windscreen to Spectrum for city's telephone.
Move approval or place on file. Prove, place on file.
Yeah, it's, we need to approve that. It comes as a communication, but we need to approve it. Yeah, and so thank you, Alderman Weigle. And there's a second from Alderman May. Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, now number 19. Communication from city administrator regarding traffic violation accident reports. A motion to place on file?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 20 is an item that we acted on already and voted favorably five, nothing. So we'll move on to item 20A on our supplemental agenda, which is the reclassification of the fire department equipment mechanic to fleet manager.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Alderman May and a second from Alderman Chapeleski.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Roat.
You always took your fire trucks over to public works, correct? See that again? Oh, I'm sorry. You always took, this is for your mechanic?
Correct.
Slash fleet manager?
Right.
And fire trucks are always taken over to public works to get worked on, correct?
In the past, yeah. And currently, you're in.
So this guy, or Yau, I'm guessing, a guy, just...
Fire truck mechanic?
Because someone called him last week. And they're gonna be at station two. I guess, just tell me a little more about this.
Station six.
And why the fleet's hired and why the, what I would call a fair amount, tremendous amount of raise in this from mechanic to fleet guy, fleet person.
Yeah, I can speak on that.
And then you're more than welcome to come up here if you'd like or stay there if you're comfortable.
So the position of fire mechanic is a move in pay is really in line with, similar to what the police department has in their fleet manager and also with some of our neighboring municipalities that also has that same position. So originally, we had listed it as an equipment mechanic. A fire mechanic is really far more diverse in the equipment that they have to work on, the specialty skills that they have to have. So that's why we were tasked for the change in scale. So the person would be tasked with managing the pumps, the aerial apparatus, all of the specialty equipment that's housed within those apparatus as well, as well as the regular day-to-day staff vehicles that are used within the fire department.
And also to your question, Alderman, as Jason mentioned, if we were to pace this position as a mechanic, they'd be consistently or significantly paid less than their counterparts at North Shore Fire Department, which is a comparable here in Milwaukee County, and City of Wawa Tulsa, both of which have a mechanic slash fleet manager.
And the PD is mechanic slash fleet manager as well?
Yes.
And same pay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grill.
This would be in the same classification as the police fleet manager position. It was reviewed by our consultant, Carlson Detman, to ensure that it was placed in the appropriate level. As you know, we're going through the market study of our salary schedule for existing positions. So it's a possibility that perhaps in the future, some of the other mechanic positions might, the recommendation may be increase in pay, I don't know. But this is what the recommendation is, is to make them the same as the police department.
And the chairman can cut me off if he likes, but am I gonna hear the word compression with this job? And what I'm getting at is, why would I want to be the fleet manager if the guy driving the truck is making more than I am? Are we gonna be hearing that? And I might be wording it all wrong, but I think you guys are getting what I'm saying.
These are not represented or sworn. This would be, this is not some...
I did not know that. I thought it was me. Okay.
No, this will be someone hired...
In my apologies.
That's okay, no, we understand. This will be someone hired specifically to manage the fleet and with expertise to do very complex repairs on the fleet and auxiliary equipment. They are not firefighters, they are not paramedics.
I did not know that. And this person can fix anything. We won't have to send it anywhere.
Oh, they'll be sending.
They'll be sending. Now, it's, won't be limited as much by the person's expertise as by our equipment here. There are some jobs that may simply be too big for one person to do in a fire station. But the goal is to keep as much as we can in-house.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Why would you do that? You have been sending them to public works. So what's the advantage? Well, the advantage is this person would be more specialized. So are you still sending it to public works for certain things or is this person doing everything?
The goal is to, we'll have a cooperative relationship with public works where if necessary, we can request their help on some projects. But the goal is to handle our repairs in-house or send out to specialized contractors when necessary, rather than rely on public works.
Why is that?
And that's something that occurs currently with the DPW as well. Sometimes there's jobs because of the specialty that even they can't handle the job either. So that wouldn't necessarily be a change, it would just be consistent with current practice.
Ms. Grill, you'd want to chime in?
I just wanted to mention the fact that we did invest significantly in new equipment for the fire department. And this position would assist in the preventive maintenance of the equipment to ensure a longer life than we previously had with some of the equipment.
The kerosene on the underbody?
Yeah.
Who used to do, no, they don't do that anymore. It worked. Is he?
Jerry.
Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Alderman Roat.
Asking the web team, public works guy, now that this mechanic is all freed up by you guys, what is that person gonna do?
So what we did in our next budget cycle, we're proposing moving one mechanic into electrical division that's a maintenance repair.
Okay.
To help our welder slash certified welder slash mechanic, that position is going to be coming open with a retired position. So we'll, we'll welder slash mechanic there. So that'll be another position freed up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigle.
Couple questions. Does this person work for us already or are we gonna be recruiting?
We'll be recruiting.
Okay. So we don't know that we can't fill the spot at a certain wage. You're just thinking that we're, that's how high we're gonna need to go to get a qualified applicant?
I can add to that, Marty. Yeah, they have someone in mind and to get this person to jump on board with us, we need to add a sweetener also is where this is coming from.
Okay. And then my second question is, I understand this person's gonna be doing, you were saying basic maintenance, like oil changes and stuff like that?
Yes.
But, you know, that seems to me like the kind of job you could have a lower waged, lower skilled person do. You know, you don't pay a chef to wash dishes if you can't, if you don't need to, you know. So, and I guess, that's why I kinda like the model. So that routine maintenance is all gonna be done in-house? You're not gonna be sending stuff over, not that public works is necessarily making less money, but they're set up to do, I think, more efficiently? Maybe they're not with the old building and all that. That's probably part of it too, right? Yeah, well, you see what I'm saying? We're gonna be paying a person a lot of money to do very low skilled stuff.
The low skilled items such as oil changes hopefully would be, that would be not the routine task for that person. That would be a small tidbit of what they do. It really wouldn't require a lot of their time. Much of their time would be in some of the maintenance and testing of some of the specialty.
Well, I understand ladders and all that stuff. I don't know where you're gonna find that guy, you know?
Okay, Alderman, a lot of times those, what we would call lower skilled items are rolled into a package of maintenance that also encompasses some great technical things. So while an engine is in for an oil service and a lube, it's also probably having its pump checked and other repairs made to the pumping apparatus, things that oil change tech probably isn't...
So while it's offline for the oil change, it's getting...
It's really important to limit that offline time as possible.
Nope, I get it.
One other thing I'll add to this is that our most recent reaccreditation process, that's where peer assessors from outside of our area come in and look at how we're doing things. One of the strategic recommendations for our department to limit liability was to have a mechanic work on our apparatus that's truly certified as an emergency vehicle technician. The DPW used to have someone on staff who had that certification, but it hasn't for a period of time. So this is a way to ensure that going forward, our repairs are made by a certified EVT.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 21, we already acted on yesterday. And then moving on to item 22, we already acted on yesterday. And then item 23, can I have a motion to place on file?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And anything else to properly come before the committee?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.